Continue the hearing for, it's-
4:11.
4:11, April 22nd. To continue, CPV Red Rock Solar LLC, 3 Lion Street, Granby, Mass., 01033, for a special permit and site plan approval as required under the following sections of the Granby zoning bylaw. I'm not going to read the whole nonsense. So we've got, we've got the feedback from the peer review from Berkshire Engineering. Is this the first? Everybody's seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, what do we have here? Brian?
Yes.
You want to walk us through the-
Sure. I'm happy to go through these line by line. I guess essentially, item one is what you need to determine at the board in issuing this special permit. Item number two were the comments that we discussed at three or four meetings ago from the fire department where we have requested that, since the fire department has to sign off on any building permit before it could be issued, that we recommend, or we would request that the board issue the permit with conditions that all of those issues are met and that the fire department is happy before building permit is issued. Item number three, board may request comments on further information to address the language of maximizing groundwater recharge. I think this is, you know, we have done this and we basically talked about this, that from a stormwater point of view, we're taking an open gravel pit site, we're vegetating it to convert it into something that will actually reduce runoff, which provides more retention onsite, more groundwater recharge, and it also improves the quality of the groundwater, or the quality of the stormwater before it's recharged as well, just from the fact that we're going from an open gravel site to a vegetated site. Item number four, the post-vehicle traffic, or post-development traffic is limited. The board may request additional information regarding vehicle trips and anticipated traffic demands associated with construction. We did put a brief summary of the construction period in the, in the original application. We would anticipate that the majority of the traffic associated with the project, which could extend for up to six months, is going to be basically the tradesmen and the electricians, so it's going to be vans and pickup truck type, type activity. It's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 22, as much as 40 on peak days, workers not knowing how much they might, you know, commute together. It's hard to say, but there's certainly plenty of parking onsite for all those vehicles. And we wouldn't anticipate that there's really any heavy equipment associated with it other than deliveries of the material. You know, soil materials, fill materials, there aren't any for the project, the material's already onsite to be spread, so the construction impact from a traffic point of view, we anticipate to be, you know, fairly small, similar or, you know, similar to a couple of residential houses even, in fact, not much larger than that.
All, all parking and storage of materials will be onsite?
It will all be onsite. There will be nothing on the ground, correct. Item number five, board may consider post-construction period verification of site stability. And I would, I would say that, you know, we do, since, since the project has opened here with you, have an order of conditions that's been issued by Conservation Commission that has all of these requirements as far as site stabilization, discharge of stormwater, discharge of settlements, it's all handled in that. I mean, certainly if the board wants, we can include you in, you know, copies on reports if you find that that's necessary, but because the project was subject to a notice of intent, we have the full stormwater requirement that we have to meet for the Conservation Commission anyway. So, I mean, we, we would hope that that's sufficient for the board. Item number six, board should note that it has the authority to determine whether efforts to place all utility connections underground are reasonable, majority of the proposed electric points will be buried, an overhead section required for the interconnection effort. And I believe that we have maximized to what we can on buried conduit and buried underground utilities. You can't bury an interconnection based on you interconnecting either to, whether it's in Ludlow Forever Source or in Granby for National Grid, the last few poles have to be above ground and they have to be visible, that's a requirement of the interconnection. So I believe we are providing, you know, but the, the majority of the site is already underground utility with as little overhead as we can get away with. Number seven, and it's a long-winded way of basically saying that we mislabeled some of the property line setbacks in the drawings, and I actually spotted that and I can go through it with you as well. Basically, I think we've met all the requirements, and now that we're upside down, I'm going to get turned around, but here we are in Granby, and basically, we are showing a 15-foot side yard setback on the side yards. We do have 40-foot front yard, which as soon as we get to Ludlow, it increases to 50 feet. And then back here, you can see on the Ludlow side, we have a 50-foot setback. On the rear, it's not labeled, this is where there's a mislabel, this is actually 15 feet, and this is actually 20 feet for the rear, so the labels are incorrect, but the dimensions that we've shown are correct. And even if we were to use a, you know, 40 or 50-foot property line setback, we're nowhere near any of those property setbacks with anything other than the interior lot lines. And I think it was our, our expectation, our, our hope certainly, that because it's all common ownership, that we wouldn't need to respect the, the property line setbacks from the interior lot lines. Ludlow has essentially already agreed to that same relief on their side of the town line, I'm sorry, right here, the town line also coincides with a property line, and they've agreed that we can go right up to that town line as long as it's common ownership on the other side, which is the property in Granby, under the same owner. Does that make sense?
I don't-
So, so I think item eight is basically a re-verification of the same comment where we, they're basically look for verification of conformity with the dimensional requirements, what basically we're showing pictorially that we are, you know, there's no development within those setback areas on the property. So we are meeting the dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Item number nine indicates the document entitled Official Zoning Map. Town of Granby depicts an area showing a water supply protection district over a portion of the subject site. Refer to Section 4.1 for requirements. Additional restrictions for work in the overlay district. We suggest the board request its response in regards to compliance with the section of the bylaw. And again, because it's all late minute, I actually brought it up and went through it, and if I can, I would like to go through those requirements with you. And it's, that's why I'm standing, it doesn't help you to see my phone here, but basically, in Section 2, so, a portion of the site is in the overlay district, use is allowed by special permit, and the underlying district are also allowed in the overlay, so the solar, since it's allowed in the underlying district, would be allowed in the overlay district. And we need to meet the standards which are, in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the water supply protection district. So from that point of view, I think it goes to one of the earlier comments where we talk about increase in quality of the stormwater as well as quantity of groundwater recharge. So I think we're meeting that requirement. Be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. And I think that the fact that we're taking the gravel site, we're reclaiming it, we're turning it into a habitat, or I'm sorry, a meadow vegetated surface, I think kind of, you know, points to that, that we're, the amount of clearing we're doing is minimal, and where we are clearing, we are revegetating. Access road to operations site shall include a gate or other mechanism to restrict public access to the site, and that is being provided. We do show fence and gates all the way around the site to protect it. Use of sodium chloride for ice control shall be minimized, consistent with public highway safety requirements, and I think that's a simple, you know, if the board would want to condition that, we're very comfortable that we can't use sodium chloride ice control products out here. Commercial fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, or other leachable materials shall not be used in amounts which result in groundwater contamination levels exceeding mass drinking water standards or national interim primary drinking water regulations. And I think that's essentially appropriate management of any, any herbicides or fertilizers that would be used, which is certainly a requirement already in the Conservation Commission order of conditions.
Can you talk about that a little, Brian?
Sure.
Do you intend to use any pesticides, fertilizers for the site?
There is no intention to use any pesticides or herbicides on the site, it will all be managed with mowing. I would say that it's likely that there could be some amount of fertilizers that are used because typically, even when you're doing a hydroseed on the site, you do a soil sample of what the underlying soils are, and you would amend those soils to maximize the potential that you're going to get vegetation growth. But it, you know, and the way I read this, this regulation, it basically says that you need to do it in that manner, where you're looking at what the soils are and providing amendments appropriately, so you, so you're not, you know, surcharging or providing, you know, a large amount of, you know, nitrogen or something that could actually get into the groundwater or something along those lines. So I think that that's, that's in line with what the intention of the project is, and that's, you know, standard, standard procedure for vegetation. And then the final comment is above-ground storage tanks, including tanks within basement for building for oil, et cetera, et cetera, placed on a dike and permeable surface to prevent spills or leaks. Floor faults shall be plugged to prevent discharative leaks. No floor drains allowed, and no some pumps, and we're not proposing any buildings, we're not proposing any storage of any kind of liquids at all on the site, so I think we comply with that.
Will you have battery storage?
If we do have battery storage, there is an area where batteries are, are shown on there now, but those aren't lead-acid batteries, even if the project does go forward with batteries. And if we do go forward with batteries, it would require a revision to the permit anyway, so we would be in front of both you and the Conservation Commission again with any requirements that there are for the batteries.
But for right, not, not, right, for right now, none?
For right now, the, the plan was to show that they could fit on the site. Should CPV decide to add batteries in the future, they would still be back in front of you, but that wasn't intentional on these, on these drawings.
Would you be able to provide a dike around the batteries in case there's ever a fire or there's fire retardant?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that that's, that would, would definitely be the case, that it could be, you know, whatever containment would be required as well as, you know, for fire close to it. And those are all the comments, and I understand it, you know, you just got them now, I got them in quarter three, you know, if, if there's any way, I could encourage you to close and approve with some conditions, that would be great with what we've been through. If you want us to do a final response, go back and forth with Berkshire Design, I understand that as well, and we can, we can do that. But I believe that the issues they raised, that I went through, are, are, you know, relatively minor in nature, and I think easily addressed.
Any comments from the board?
Well, I'd like to see the response in writing.
Okay.
And also the response from the, you've already met with the fire chief on this?
We met with the fire chief, yes.
So he just has to give us his response.
He, he had a number of comments that he issued that were along the lines of, that he was working, he, he wants to see a more detailed response plan, which is something that would be developed as part of the final, the final design when they actually have a contractor on board, to be able to provide more detail about the actual construction sequencing, as well as when the electrical design is done, to show where the disconnects are. So what the sequence would be, what the actual requirements if there was an emergency situation and they had to come on site. That information doesn't exist now because we're in the permit phase and we have what's a preliminary layout, we don't have full electrical design, we don't have all those pieces. Those, those aren't generally developed until after the local permits are in place to know where the project is going, you know, to determine the, the final design pieces.
So that would just be included as a condition?
That would be. The other, the other piece of that was, I know he was talking about multiple shut-offs.
Yep.
And I'm not so sure I'm in favor of having multiple shut-offs for, for zoning. There's a fire, there's an issue there, they're not going to have time to figure out what, what shut-off controls, what zone. If there's an issue there, there should be one shut-off, and then, and then everything is down to protect it. Rather, rather than the, the way this, this could be zoned off, who would, who would know if it, you know, technically if it covered without going through a, a detailed plan? They don't always have time to do that.
And I think-
One shut, there could be shut-offs at both entrances, but that, but that would have to kill everything.
Yeah, and there's only one entrance where we're coming in from, the main entrance. And that's absolutely, the intention is that it's, that's certainly where the power would be killed. Beyond that, there is the ability within the project, if it was a, I don't know, a non-emergency situation or a maintenance situation where you can isolate areas of the array, but from a, from an emergency response point of view, I, I agree that the project would be immediately shut down. If there's a fire, if there's an emergency, if there's anything, that I think that's, that's a matter of course, and I think his, his comments of that, he may have tried to have been helpful to, you know, if there was a fire in one area to not shut it out, but it's certainly not how these facilities typically operate. If there's an emergency issue, they shut down and they disconnect. And in fact, at the utility interconnection, there's a, a gang-operated air brake, and the air brake means you can look up at it and you can see that it's actually open, which is what the fire department would do. When they get to the site, they're going to look specifically at that piece of equipment and see that it's physically disconnected, so they know that there's absolutely nothing, no way for it to backfeed from the grid into that facility. So it shuts it right down, right there at the street line, and that's one of the reasons that it's above ground, is so it's physically visible when you approach the site.
Is that automatically, does that automatically happen?
That automatically happens, that's a requirement through interconnection for national electricity. This being a, a remote generator or distributed generator is what they call it, it has to have that, it has to, but by code, it has to have that. And all the utility companies require that.
Makes sense.
Does the town have any town wells in the area? It's in the water supply protection district, I'm asking.
The whole, the whole town is, is on wells in the west part.
Oh, so there's private wells, but there's no public water supply down there?
No, I didn't think this any-
No.
I see.
So- We have an area designated as the, the well fields, but there are no wells that can be found in the well fields.
I see.
Okay.
Yeah. Supposedly there's at least one well in there, and everybody has spent a lot of time looking for it and they can't find it.
So the concerns about water quality protection in that area then are not as significant as you might think?
Correct. From my point of view.
The whole area, there's, there's, there's a couple developments, one, one ongoing in that area too, that, that would pose more of a detriment to the aquifer than, than that with this one, as far as fertilizing lawns and septic systems and so on.
Okay. So there's no need to, to be very strict about protecting our municipal water supply from this matter?
No.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
So are you going to give us at some point some updated plans with a little correct notation?
We can absolutely fix those, those setbacks, the designations on the setback, yeah.
Okay.
And it's sounding to me like you're not in favor of closing and issuing a conditional approval tonight, and if that's the case, I would say by the next hearing, I can certainly have an updated set of drawings to, to, to submit along with, there was a formal response to these comments.
A formal response.
And to the best that I can control it, I will work with Berkshire Engineering for them to review our response as well. And I can't, you know, we, we struggled to get these, when we did, I will absolutely do my best to, to get something back from them, but I can't control that. Hopefully maybe since the contract was signed by you, maybe you've got more leverage than I do, or certainly with Bill, Bill's had better, better luck than I did, so I would ask you for your continued help with that.
Sure.
Well, our next meeting is a public hearing, it's going to be continued anyway.
Which public hearing? Oh, um, the retail store?
Yeah.
This won't take long, I don't think. As well as the fire chief's written response.
Yeah, and you have the, the written response. I mean, you know, I, I spoke with the fire chief after that, and he indicated that he was going to talk to Ludlow, you know, he certainly, you know, I think wants those issues addressed, and we want to address them too, but we can't address all of them. So I can, you know, formally request that it become part of a, a condition, that all of his requirements are met prior to building permit, so it gets formalized in that manner, if that's, if that's suitable. We can certainly do that as part of a response here as well. And actually, one of the items is, is pointed to that, so item number two, I think we would, we would make that formal request, I think it was three.
It was two.
And as far as conservation goes, you've fully approved?
Fully approved, order of conditions was issued, and we also filed that night through the Mass. EDEP online, so the appeal period started, and I think we're almost all the way through that appeal period even with, with the order of conditions. So that's, that's done.
That's good.
Unless somebody appeals it at the last minute, which, given that there were noobutters and nobody at any of the meetings, I can't imagine that that's a concern, except we're now televised here and I'm encouraging people out there in the, in the world to look for it, but I feel like that's fairly well-
So if we, if we continue this to our next, our next meeting, you'll have a response Also maybe, maybe address the bit with the batteries too.
Yep.
If, if batteries are added, you have to come back.
Yep.
Even if it's a year from now or after you're up and running, just so we, we can change the emergency response plan, so the fire department knows that there's, there's batteries onsite.
Definitely.
And of course, you'll provide us at the end with an ASBIL on a, electronic ASBIL.
Those are your standard requirements on all fronts, yeah, that's not an issue.
Have you calculated a removal amount?
Yep, it was in the application.
Okay. Do we know whether Berkshire reviewed that at all?
I have no idea if they reviewed it, they didn't comment on it at all in, in their, you know, it was, the requirement of that is for it to be prepared by a professional engineer, I'm the one who put it together and, and certified that. It's similar to every other decommissioning that, you know, we've put together, and also that we've, you know, the other one that we pre-reviewed on your behalf for a previous project in, in Granby. It uses the same logic and the same approach.
Good. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so, when's our next meeting?
29th, Monday. We had a public hearing scheduled, but that's, we've already requested an extension on that, the retail store.
May 9th, is what we said.
April 29th.
All April 29th.
A week from today.
You saw that request from our board of engineering to continue the retail development project.
Does that give you enough time though?
Monday.
It absolutely gives me enough time, the only caveat is whether or not Berkshire, Berkshire will be able to, to respond to our responses, but I, I mean-
Well, they did this in a few days, so it shouldn't take them that long to-
Agreed. And I should just be, they should just be reading what I essentially agree with or point out what we're doing on that, so I would hope that they should be able to turn it around fairly quickly. But I just can't control that. We can certainly have these responses back, I'll tell you the week, is today, is Monday? Today's Monday, we should have these out the door, if not tomorrow, then definitely by first thing on Wednesday, back to the board formally and also to Berkshire Engineering.
Okay. Now-
Do you think it's a little aggressive to be able to get something in writing from Berkshire in a week?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Do you want to try for the big topic?
It should be a fairly light lift if we can get their attention. But that said, if we don't have the hearing for three weeks, we might not get it for three weeks either, I don't know.
Well, we can't meet on the 13th, because that's the special town meeting, so we'd have to meet either the next day or the day after.
You have been extremely cordial to us this whole process, and I appreciate that. I would love to try to do it on the 29th, if that's possible.
So you're, you're asking for a continuance till the 29th?
29th.
At?
Noon? No.
That's not going to happen.
You, you tell me what's ideal or what works for you.
What time's our normal schedule?
Well, the other public hearing was scheduled for 5:45, if we do this for 5:30?
Yeah, that's fine.
5:30?
Perfect.
Okay. Throw a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the Red Rock Solar public hearing to Monday, April 29th, at 5:30 PM at the Carnegie Library.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate you getting us in here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm glad we made some progress.
Little bit. Is that your pen?
Thank you.
Okay.
And good luck with the rest of the hearing. It sounds riveting.
Stick around.
All right, boys. Thank you very much, okay.
Take care.
You too.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn this meeting?
This meeting.
Not at the-
We're not going to re, we're not going to reconvene until-
Six.
Six o'clock.
There was a request from board of engineering to continue the hearing from April 29th. They had sent out two peer reviews, did you get a chance to select those?
No, no.
One from Time Bond, and one from Sherman and Trigger. They actually wanted to go with the higher cost proposal, which is Time Bond-
Oh, yes, yes, I did see that, yep.
For about, I think it was $9,000 or so. And I didn't know what, what your procedure was, whether you just would allow him to go with that consultative, he's on your list, or whether you have to vote to allow him to do that or-
Well, we technically haven't closed, adjourned from the hearing into a meeting.
Yeah, and we can't do that until we, we reconvene. When we want to redo that at 6 o'clock, or do you want to?
You want to do it now, or are you, while we're here, or were you off and running to?
Well, he needs to go get some, get some equipment, and then when he gets back, then we can talk about, we can reconvene at 6.
We only have this 4, this 4 PM listed as a public hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
We didn't have it listed as a meeting-
No.
With a public hearing, thinking back.
No. So we just have two public hearings listed.
I think we'd be kind of getting a little too technical if we weren't to respond to that, and have to wait until our next meeting.
Do, uh, 5:30, 5:45? To do this-
Wait a minute, we did have a meeting started, right, that's right, we're supposed to meet for the public hearing, we're supposed to have a meeting before it amongst ourselves at, what was it, 5 o'clock?
Let me see the, this, the agenda.
I don't have, you have it. That's not the way the agenda reads.
Because that was our intent, to have a, to meet before the public hearing.
But that's the way the agenda reads. Without, it's just the two public hearings and no-
Maybe there are a few business I have to take care of, I don't think that's a, a big deal.
Otherwise, we'd have to wait till next Monday to discuss it at the public hearing.
We'd have to rebook now, let's, uh-
We'll delay it a week. Now, we can't make any decisions on any of these.
No.
The question before you now is just who to pick for, as a peer review-
Correct.
Right, but even, and out of any of the projects going on now, we can't make decisions.
Correct. With, with, this weekend, we, we can make a decision on this, this is just a clerical.
Yes, that, but as far as any finalization of a project.
Right.
No, including one we just, we just adjourned, or continued.
Right.
Interesting.
So-
So we had the public hearing without a meeting wrapped around it, so we couldn't have even voted this evening if everything was good, is, am I understanding that correctly?
No, we certainly could, yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the- That's part of the piece there.
Oh, you, it's a public hearing, but closed to public?
We just, yeah, we just continued. So let's, let's...
So we, closing?
No, we continued it. We never...
But I mean, right now, what do we, we continued that, and now what are we doing?
So let's, let's just open up a, a regular meeting. It is...
So 4:41?
5:41, right. 4:41, I'm sorry, 4:41.
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
The public meeting?
Yes.
Public hearing? Public meeting?
Public meeting.
I'll make a motion to open a public meeting, the public meeting.
4:41, April twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bill, tell us what you got. There's, there was three quotes.
There were, actually, there were two quotes. This is for the commercial development project of 7,500 square foot retail development on West Main Street. The one from Sherman and Friedrich for the engineering portion was $2,400. They don't have traffic expertise, so they would sub that out to a firm called Malone and McBrum, and their price was $4,000. So that was a total of $6,400 for the period here. The other proposal was from Time Bond, which they do have, they have traffic expertise, and their proposal was for $9,000. It was actually the intent of the applicant to select a higher-priced peer review proposal from Time Bond because they felt they could respond more quickly than Sherman and Friedrich. So they just wanted your permission to go ahead and, and use Time Bond for this peer review process.
And the other one was who?
Sherman and Friedrich.
And they're both on the list, so they choose, they're free to choose whoever they want if they're on the list, so... Do we have a motion to approve the Time Bond?
I'll make a motion to approve Time Bond as the peer reviewer for the town regarding the project on West State Street.
Retail store development?
Retail store development.
On West Street?
West State.
West Street. Sorry, laughing because I forgot the T, so retail store development. West State Street.
Second?
We have a second? Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, you have that public hearing scheduled for the twenty-ninth of April, and they're requesting a continuance because they don't think they can get a peer review report done in time. Would you like to just go ahead and see if it can be done before you grant that continuance, or would you rather give them the continuance now?
Well, if we don't, if we don't give them the continuance now, then we have to, we would have to post and advertise...
The hearing's already opened. This would be the second session.
I know, but we'd have to, we'd post it and notify the butters.
No, once, it's already been continued. All you have to do when you continue a meeting is announce it at the hearing that it's being continued to a certain date.
So we'd have to wait until next week, though, to make that decision? Because that's when they're scheduled? Okay. Is that what you're thinking, Jim?
Yeah.
Because that's when, if anybody had any questions about them, that's when it would be...
They would be here to know that.
So we'll wait until the next meeting?
Okay.
That particular public hearing. But you will let them know now that, go right ahead with the peer reviewers?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
I believe that the Time Bond proposal requires a signature. We just have to go ahead and...
Do you have it there?
Sign that now.
Sure.
I'll let them know, get that underway.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Why are we adjourned?
To adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.